Good morning, everyone, and welcome today to the Jackson County Board and Supervisory Meeting for Tuesday, December fifth. It is December and twenty twenty-three, and we have an early start today. We have some other commitments, other meetings in Dubuque on this morning, so we do have an early start for anybody that wonders why. But anyway, with me today, Doc Schmanker.
Morning.
And myself, Mike Donitz, your county supervisors. We have Lisa, our county auditor, Bill is I T. And Luanne is our executive assistant in the background. And first on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Kimmy, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning, Todd.
Your board is good. Uh, so first item on the agenda is a field entrance of hundred twenty-ninth Avenue. Class D field enters the the site distance from the south is five hundred feet to the north is three twenty-five, but it's three hundred twenty-five feet because to the north, there's a T intersection. So you can see to the T, but you can't see any farther because there's no road to see any farther. So cars coming from that direction won't be traveling fifty-five anyway. So long story short, I I just recommend we approve it without a sign because you wouldn't even be able to put the sign in advance because uh, it's it's too close to the intersection. So you're the cars coming off that T intersection heading south will already be traveling less than fifty-five miles per hour, so.
I'm on to approve.
Thank you.
Yeah, motion and second to approve the inter commit for Chuck Nurgis as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same time. Motion carried.
Okay, the next item here is a uh utility permit for Cascade Communications, just a bore service under two hundred and eight street to exist from an existing candle to a property owner. Don't see any issue with it.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve Cascade Communications, the underground utility permit as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Okay, uh, one quick item here. Got a complaint about what is it? Can't remember the street number. So I'm like three oh eighth? No.
We're gonna say three oh eight.
Diagnostome.
Okay, yeah, I know where you're at.
Yeah, I can't pronounce. What is it? Deandre.
Andre.
Yes.
What?
Uh, anyway, there's a level B road that comes in from the south, okay, and then it stops. And there's a road that comes, it's level A, comes down from the north, goes past this guy's property. Uh, God, I just was just talking to Rick about it. What's this guy's name?
Peters.
Pull it up. Peters. And anyway.
Charlie, our gun, Steve Peters.
Yeah, he's got a, he's got a gated. So his cattle could go from the north to get watered as well. Well, the one guy was complaining about having to go through the gates. He is correct. It's an open public right away. Yeah. So anyway, long story short, his solution is to put in cattle crossing. You know, the the pipes, the cattle crossing. Yeah. Cattle pass at his own expense.
Andre's solution or Steve's solution?
Steve's.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, I have to do some due diligence and find out like from the county attorney, is that something that's even allowed? And I don't believe that section of road is technically signed as level B. It needs to be.
I I don't know that it is either.
So it or it's being maintained as little B and it needs to be signed accordingly. So we need to correct that. And then we need to find out if that's uh an allowable thing from a liability standpoint to do that in the road.
You're right there. I would go back up to the that one. And now go, um, yeah, there you go. That's the Aristino's right there, Andres.
That isn't his place. It's Steve's. Go down here. Three oh eighth, keep going down. All right, keep going down. Yeah, so it's down in here.
So I didn't know there was a road that turned out just a hair way.
Turn it this way?
Yeah, don't hit your head over there. I didn't even know there was a road there. Past Steve's place.
Yeah, it's public right away.
Oh. And Steve is in agreement there?
Rick talked to him and said that that was his proposal to do that. So before we, I was just making you guys aware, and then I'm gonna do like I said, do by due diligence and find out if that's an option.
Where does that road go to? Somewhere.
It goes down and then it just it's it's right away all the way down. It meets up with the road coming from the south.
That's technically a level A road right now. Presumably.
Well, it's level B coming from the south. If you're, you're keep going down. And then you gotta go that way, I think. Maybe. Yeah, reps back around, keep going, keep going. And now it's signed level B going this way. But there's nothing that's signed. It's coming from the north.
So coming from the north, I missed that one when I was a kid.
How far, how far do we maintain coming from the north?
Do we go all the way down Steve's?
So we go just to that like first property there from the south or a little ways, and then from the north, we go down about to his house, and that's kind of where we stop maintaining is level A. Then it comes level B or basically I don't think there's sections of it where I don't think you can drive. I haven't been out there myself, so.
Well, I guess, yeah, well, somebody Rick will have to check it out and see what the proposal might be. I I would like to check it out myself, I guess.
So anyway, the real question is, is that if do we allow property owner to put a cattle pass in the road? That's the real question.
Yeah.
That's it. Because if we can't, then.
My question is down the road, if something goes on with that.
So he he wants to put it actually in the the driving surface, not?
Yes.
Because right now he's got the driving surface gated.
So before we make, to me, before we make any decision, you made the comment just a little bit ago that you don't even think part of the road is passing.
I I think there's sections of it that would be, when you say look minimal maintenance, level B, it's minimal maintenance.
So why isn't it at some point be level C and gated off?
Because getting it off wouldn't solve this person's issue. Because he doesn't want to open gates now to get to his property. So if we get it off as level C, he's gonna have the same issue. He's gonna have to open gates to get to his property.
So I would, I would call it Steve's lane. That's actually a county road that goes to his property. From the north. Yes.
That's one of the things we'll have to verify, but it looks like that's that's still right away. That's what Beacon has, but we, that's one of the things we need to verify. But from what we've looked at initially, it shows it as right away all the way through there.
Yeah, it's interesting. So that would be one of them right there where you can see the cross coming across the field right here?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where he'd want to put his cattle crossing, but I think that's where they have, you can kind of see the gates.
Yeah. So he's got it gated now on north and south of that, or or does he got it gated right in the road?
I think it's all gated down to here, and then there's gate there, gate there, and he's kind of come through this way. So he's got to open this gate to get through. There's fence along here.
So there's no locks on them? It's like when we do it to a level.
What?
So we do a levels C or whatever, then each property owner along that gets a key to the gate. So this is not that way?
No, this is not level C.
All right. And how can he have a gate across that and so nobody can?
Well, he's saying he should.
He's not supposed to, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I.
That's why we got to complain is because he's got a gate in, he's not supposed to. And I think he's had it gated, and this is kind of like I think the guy that called was just like, all right, he's kind of getting what do you call it, frustrated with the having to open gates every time he goes back to his property.
All right, we'll have to, you'll have to investigate and give a report. We'll do our own research.
All right. That's it. So we gotta go to Dubuque, don't we?
Uh, yeah, well.
Starts at ten thirty? It's a half hour meeting and then we're supposed to meet with Stu at eleven?
Stu at eleven, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, as yearly.
You guys going to meet with students? Gonna rank them all at Kohl's.
I got a question about for you, you and Stu when we get there too about the speed limit and but anyway, have you talked to railroad at all about the discussion we had about three ninety-fifth up there crossing?
I sent the same guy, I sent him an email about exactly what you said. Why don't you block this other crossing that won't affect anybody and have your whatever you want to call it, your your siding to the to the south. Yeah. I've I've got any response to it. I said that before I left on vacation.
So you're familiar. My question is why would it crosses three ninety-fifth right there where you're going to screw your quick? Yeah, why don't you run that siding past that? Because there's another road coming from each way. It doesn't hurt any, any if the train is sitting there. It would take you another minute to get to where you're going.
Yeah, the only thing I could think of, and I don't know how far south they want to go under the overpass.
Sure.
I don't know if they got enough width under the underpass to put the siding in.
I don't think it goes under the underpass.
But I think maybe if they wanted to have a three mile siding, it would have to maybe. I don't know. But I haven't got a response.
I'm not sure, sure, yeah. Yeah. Anyway. Um, update on the bridge?
What?
Update on the bridge shelter. It wasn't South Vaticar there that they're working on?
Are they done with it?
No, are they update? What's an update on? I mean, traders are still working on that one, correct?
Uh, summer one, I saw on the the task board, they were supposed to be pouring the deck December first. So if that happened, Jayden's off today. I didn't didn't get a chance to talk to him, but uh, if that happened, I'm assuming they'd be closing, or let's see, December one was.
Right.
Hmm, they probably won't get it open this week, it'd be next week. Because you gotta at least seven days usually to get the strength of the deck. And they'll have to finish their back walls and then their back fill. So I'm gonna guess this time end of next week.
Good. Appreciate it.
Did Jayden talk to you about what we need to do for change in service and wifi and all that at the shop? Because I got like a contract I'm supposed to fill out, but I need to talk to you about some of this stuff. Because we were hoping to drop Century Link and just have all the service provided by.
Yeah. What I emailed you, we just have to sign this in there.
But there was questions about it.
We'll talk later.
Okay.
Thank you. Good day. All right, next on our agenda, are there any visitors or citizens online or present? I don't see any present. Anybody that would like to address the board? Uh, hearing or seeing none? We'll move on to Lisa, our county auditor. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. This mo- this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three board proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorize publication in the Pitsel newspapers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes for November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and forty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the claims uh for four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two cents as presented with a note that there's two new trucks.
You're the twenty-five thousand dollar pass through.
Twenty-five thousand dollar pass through to
Andrew?
Um, yeah, to RTCP.
Yeah.
And if it wasn't for the engineer, we'd be at about fifty thousand dollar fine period. Now we gotta keep up with our equipment, so uh it's improvement. Their trucks are eleven, twelve years old. They do a lot of work, so.
They were probably a year and a half ago.
Yeah, yeah, probably over a year and a half. Probably a year old. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried.
I need a motion to approve a handwritten warrant to Peggy McMurray for a hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifteen cents to replace the ACH warrant, which was rejected by the bank with what was the account?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion that.
Is there any fees with that?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Motion and a second to approve a handwritten warrant to Peggy McMurray as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Need a motion to accept, place on file and authorize the chair signature and the reporters' report of fees collected for the month of November twenty-three in the amount of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and one dollar and two cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the county recorder's report of fees collected for the month of November as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
All that I have for the board today.
Thank you. All right. Uh, we're a little bit early, Luanne. Can you do your business? Good morning.
Good morning. Calendar for this week. Um, at ten thirty this morning, which is why we started early, is an RPA regular meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Nin and Don. And at eleven o'clock is the RP a a DMAT and DMAT's annual meeting with Stu Anderson, also in Dubuque or by Zoom for all of you. Um, at one o'clock, I mean, tomorrow, Wednesday, December sixth, we'll start there. Eleven o'clock is a tag annual meeting and all county meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for all of you. Um, followed at one o'clock by our Isaac's District Six Supervisors meeting um in Dubuque or by Zoom for all of you. Also at one o'clock, Nin has a zero to five in sixty minutes meeting, and they've changed the name of that, right? It's a family support um advisory committee now. Um, by Zoom, she chooses to do that. At four thirty tomorrow, which is Wednesday, is our possible meeting um at Innovate One Twenty for any of you that want to go. And at five thirty tomorrow night is an ECIA special council meeting uh Zoom only for Mike.
Is that still going on? I thought I seen a cancellation somewhere, but I may not. I'll confirm that when I'm up there.
I'll double check it. Okay, Thursday, December seventh is our all-day budget work sessions. Uh, the first work session scheduled at nine o'clock. There's we are scheduled through noon, and then we have a break of forty-five minutes to an hour and start again, schedule start again at one o'clock and go until the ending about four o'clock.
Looking at your schedule for the budgets, I see that we had uh NEI three A command. Um, and they made their presentation, but on your list it says NEI three A senior center. Um, is the senior center, I don't see them, you know, they're forty-two hundred dollars. I don't see them. Did they ask for?
They did not ask.
There's a submitter request in there, but are they gonna present or?
Mm-hmm, she didn't respond to the invitation. I did send her an invitation if she wanted to set up Kathy Cundy.
Good.
But I didn't get a response back. So maybe she.
Maybe need to recheck with her. Um, so as far as that budget work session goes, I would hope that we can minimize our our break to a point that I have another commitment later that afternoon that I may have to leave around in in there. So I don't know if we can work that in that we can minimize our hour break.
And I'm not sure. All I have scheduled after lunch is the Sheriff's Department.
Now we'll check with him to see if he can come in at twelve thirty if possible.
Okay.
I don't know if that works for everybody else or not.
Monday off, I'm here.
I'll bring you a sandwich.
You're on your five pizzas, is that what I think?
I thought, I thought. So that's the question. How do you want to spend that hour? You can do whatever you want with that, so. Okay, um. They will. Yeah, I have to bring lunch, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all that.
I was being smart.
Okay, Friday, December eighth, um at ten A M is Seventh Judicial District Department of Correction and the dedication ceremony only um in Davinport for Nin. On Friday, also, I will potentially be out of the office that day, at least part of the day. On Monday, December eleventh, at seven thirty A M, it's an early childhood Iowa Executive Committee meeting, um in Duwitt or by Zoom for Nin. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, December twelfth, at nine A M. And that afternoon at four o'clock is a McHuckada River Watership Management Authority Executive Meeting by Zoom for Don. Okay, um, business this evening. I'm looking for um discussion, possible action on the appointment to the Together We Build Board. And two people that um we had names that volunteered to do that, so I don't know what you want to do with that.
I I don't have an issue with with the suggestions that were made. Anybody else have any suggestions, or I didn't really contact, make any contacts as far as that go?
I would make a motion that we approve Will Cornelius and Katie Boops.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to brew uh Will Cornelius and Katie Boops to Together We Build Committee. All in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Just for clarification, that is a figure appointment, isn't it?
Sure.
I did want to make sure because.
I read the new bylaws of the yeah, I'm looking so.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next uh piece of business I have is the courthouse. The new courthouse snow and ice parking policy, since it's going to continue to try to snow on us, we should probably decide what we want to do there. And I sent out a draft of the proposal, which basically just gives them all the information that I usually get called about as to where we can park, where we can and when. So I did send it to Josh and and Frank. They both said that was fine.
Okay, yeah, as we talked about the last time, but as long as they're the city is okay with whatever we drafted over there. I'm okay with it. So everybody's on the same page. Is there any other issues with it?
Well, I think it's good.
It covers the new corner lot.
Basically, it's maybe overnight, you shouldn't be parking in the new corner lot or the courthouse.
Or the city lot over here, because that's when they clear snow and ice. And in the library lot, we can park south of the library. There's only nine spots maximum down there. Um, and we just park on one side at a time, and then they'll clear the other side, and then we just switch sides the next day. Frank and I have been doing this, coordinating this for um several years, so.
The wishes of the board.
Second.
I got motion and second to approve the courthouse snow slash ice parking lot policy as presented. Uh, basically says don't park there overnight if there's chance, no.
Right, and don't park there the next night because then that finished.
It's pretty logical, yes. We gotta, we can't plow around cars or we're gonna have some issue, so.
Basically, at night, we need to be parking up there.
If there's any way.
You never know when that snow is gonna pop up or whatever.
We got caught last weekend, right? Because I couldn't decide on Wednesday if we were gonna have snow or not.
So just at night, park your vehicles up there.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Okay, um, discussion, possible action on the Head Start lease with HACAP.
And Jane approved, I see.
She did.
Yeah.
She was fine with that. And and
So we changed that.
Started December first, which is what we had.
Basically, we already really changed that. We had discussion of um who's um responsible for what parts of the building and equipment, da da da. So in a nutshell, it says that we're responsible for the building. As I read it and I talked to the county attorney about it, and they're responsible for the equipment to run their business or whatever they're doing there. And it also says that we are to get a four percent increase yearly for the next three years, correct? That's in a nutshell, the changes. And they've been approved by both sides or.
They've, you know, so the other they've approved it, they're.
Yeah, she said, she said their board doesn't meet until December seventh.
But she was good with it.
But she was okay. She thought she was sure they would approve it, so.
Also went back and said, you know, if it's okay with Lisa and then their bookwork, that we can retroact her back to effective through December first.
Yes. She was all right with that as well.
Is it right first to approve it before they do?
I would say it could be that pending their approval.
Would be my motion.
Second.
Retrobacking to the December first.
Motion and a second to approve the Head Start lease as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
They will have you sign two copies, two originals of that today, and then I will send them the originals to HACAP, and they will sign both copies and send one back to us. Um, discussion, possible action on the Andrew Jackson Care Facility lease with Imagine the Possibilities.
Again, discussion on that is we uh negotiated the best we could, and we actually got an increase from them also from Imagine the Possibility, so we got a two percent increase uh per year for three years. So we haven't had had an increase for a long time, so it is nice to have somebody in that building and to uh be using that facility anyways, it brings facilities, so we keep it up. Again, responsibilities are as stated in the contract that we're responsible for this or that, and it's also spelled out in there, so. Any questions on that lease? It's been approved by CEO Todd. Uh, again, pending their board approval and retroactive to the first of December.
So moved under those conditions.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the Andrew Jackson Care Facility lease with uh I T P as presented with the terms, all those in favor say aye.
Okay.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
That's all I have for you this morning.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna back back up to visitors. Frank, you wanna approach the board?
No, I'm just here to see what the presentation is from the.
Okay. So we are down to Becky.
Don't give me words.
You're ready.
If you want to do.
I don't know.
Yeah, we worked. Um, we met last Tuesday, um, because then we talked about they were trying to do a swats or strength weaknesses, opportunities and and uh he stands for, analysis of the county and what we're serving. There's a lot of good ideas, and the biggest thing was the fact they only got like ten responses. So we went through it as a board and uh we talked about some changes on the board, but it was relatively enough lighter meeting, so.
So at this time, we are joined by Becky Chaitman, our Director of Human Resources. And uh it would include the presentation of Jackson County Initial Bargaining Proposal to Teamsters Local One Twenty, and we're joined by Mr. John.
Flutway.
Flutway, that's what I thought. I would destroy that, John. I apologize for that, so. Uh, you're muted, John.
Just a second. John, are you muted on your side? We can't hear you. Still nothing.
Still can't hear you.
I can't read.
You're definitely working.
Yeah, there you go. No?
No.
Want to try your phone?
Well, let's do this. Did you get the email I just sent you?
Yes.
Okay, we go. I was gonna say I can read it. We don't have to. Okay, okay.
So that'll give you some. Again, we're joined here and well while we were joined, there you go. Okay, welcome anyway, John, and appreciate you showing up here this morning and coming and discuss. Um, so I'll I'll will just let Becky take over.
Perfect. So John, I just went ahead and shot you this email so you can kind of follow along. It's quite lengthy, so I'm not gonna read all of the contents, but I'm going to just kind of summarize what we propose those changes to be, and then we can discuss this further as we go through negotiations. Um, and I did provide, or I did um do a draft contract that will better clarify what our proposal is, and I will email that to you after, but this is just, I'll go ahead and read through the proposal like the losses we're supposed to do. So today is December fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and today we are providing our initial proposal from Jackson County to Teamsters Local One Twenty. The proposed changes in the agreement between Teamsters Local One Twenty and Jackson County. The county reserves the right to make such additions, deletions, corrections, modifications, and amendments to these proposals as it may deem proper during the course of negotiations. Starting with Article Two, Section two point oh one, we propose striking two point oh one and replacing it with the language that I have provided. Section three point oh one, we propose striking the last half of the paragraph as provided. Section three point oh three, we propose deleting that entire section. Section four point oh two, we propose deleting the entire section. Sections five point oh two, five point oh three, and five point oh four, we propose deleting all three sections. We propose deleting the entire article number seven. We propose re-titling Article Nine to job assignments. And we propose deleting Section nine point oh one. We propose. We propose updating section nine point oh two as drafted. We propose deleting sections nine point oh three, nine point oh four, nine point oh five, and nine point oh six. Section ten point oh one, we propose. Um, updating as indicated. Section ten point oh two, we propose deleting. Article eleven, we propose deleting the entire article. We propose deleting entire article number twelve. We propose deleting entire article number thirteen. We propose deleting entire article number fourteen. Under article number fifteen, we propose deleting sections fifteen oh one, fifteen oh two, fifteen oh three, fifteen oh four, fifteen oh six, fifteen oh seven, fifteen oh eight, fifteen oh nine, fifteen ten, fifteen eleven, fifteen twelve, fifteen thirteen. And, uh, there's two fifteen fifteens actually listed in the contract, that's typographical error, we propose deleting section fifteen fourteen, personal transportation to and from work. We propose deleting section fifteen oh, fifteen sixteen and fifteen seventeen. Article sixteen, we were, we propose replacing sixteen oh one as drafted. We propose deleting all sections sixteen oh two through sixteen oh eight. Article eighteen, we propose deleting the entire article. Article twenty, we propose a three-year contract, July first of twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty-seven. Appendix A Base Wage Schedule, we propose amending. The appendix to be titled Wage Administration, Pay Grades and Classifications. And this would include all new employees being hired in at ninety percent of the base wage schedule set for the respective classification, and increasing to one hundred percent upon completion of six months employment. All current employees with over six months of employment and whose wages are below one hundred percent of the base pay for the respective classification will be adjusted to that new base pay effective July one, twenty twenty-four. All wage changes shall become effective the first day of July annually, following the granting of waging, who's as best follows. Jackson County proposes a six percent increase on July first of twenty twenty-four. For the classifications of Equipment Operator One, Parts and Inventory Specialist Sign Person. Equipment Operator Two, Jackson County proposes adjusting the base wage by an increase of thirty cents. Plus a six percent increase after that adjustment to base. Jackson County proposes striking the positions covered of Engineering Inspector and Engineering Instrument Person, as was recently, um, approved through Purb through a, um, unit modification. And a six percent increase for Equipment Operator Three and Mechanic. Following those same classifications, Jess, Jackson County proposes a three point five percent increase on July first of twenty twenty-five and a three point five percent on July first of twenty twenty-six. Jackson County proposes striking the lead position designation for the Engineering Instrument Person, and adding, and, and adding a lead person for, um, designated for shops one, five, and six. Jackson County proposes striking the language that the, the instrument, Engineering Instrument Person will have lead person status only with regard to survey crew, he or she will not be authorized to direct maintenance operations, as that position will no longer be covered in the contract. Jackson County proposes each lead person receive the base pay plus one dollar per hour additional. And Jackson County proposes the current contract language for all other articles and sections not mentioned today. In response to the union's request to negotiate a safety allowance, vacation progression, longevity, and cost of living increases. Jackson County declines to negotiate on those items, however, may consider policy revisions separate from. The union contract. And just to clarify, the cost of living increase, Jackson County declines to negotiate, um, a cost of living increase separately from the six percent, three and a half and three and a half percent, um, offered above. That's the end of the presentation, um, John, like I said, I did go ahead and do a draft contract that will clarify some of those modifications more clearly, and I will send that to you.
Okay.
Quick response to your email about possible dates to negotiate, so if you can go ahead and look at your calendar, I know you said next week was not available for you, um.
Yeah, yeah, my December is not good, um. But, uh, I'll see if I can move some stuff around, or Tuesdays generally the best. For you.
Yes. Tuesdays.
Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Five, six, and eight instead of.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'll look to see, uh, see what I can move around to try and get us in at least a session before Christmas.
Okay, and even if we need to have you zoom in, we can have that arranged too, if you can't make it down here, we can get, get, get the guys to the table or however we want to handle that, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, appreciated, John, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I guess we'll wait for a response for that.
Yeah, I did the draft contract, so I'll send it to them, and then we just need to sit at the table and kind of hammer some of those things.
We're still in negotiation, so some of it certainly can't be disclosed, but, um, again, some of the. Deleted that we made are in the handbook, correct?
It just cleans a lot of it up, yeah.
Cleans up the contract.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so we do have a new employee that started, um, Jeff Kilburg, he will be our Facilities Maintenance Manager. I don't know, I'll try to catch him here while you guys finish up, and maybe before the end of the meeting, I can get him in front of the camera. Um, he was in building as far as.
We came in this morning, it looked like there was a whirlwind going on through the hallways and stuff, so.
Yeah.
So, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, yeah, we'll try to get him in here before you guys adjourn.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Lori. If you are available, we're ready.
I'm available.
Good.
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you, guys. I've been told to.
Yeah.
The slave driver right there, so, anyway, um.
Now we have good ones.
The rules, yes, sir, um, the rules of procedure for the zoning commission. Luanne, and mind you, we had a lot of eyes on this, there was a mistake, so we are gonna have to hear that. I'm gonna try to have it on the nineteenth meeting.
Okay.
We had a, an issue, um, and we had a lot of eyes on it, even the county attorney, and Luanne caught it. So. Just as it was gonna finish, and I can make the Leisure Lake stuff. Pretty fast and simple, you have five in front of you. Um, there has been some. Some progress on some, major progress on the others. And I would have recommend that you extend each of these by out. Um, a- as requested by the property owners.
Okay, so it's been a little while since we had an updated sheet with color coded, uh, like. Who's been extended once, twice, or three times, and if we can provide that maybe the next time, I, I, I've looked at. These, and I suppose we all did somewhat, um.
They're all first.
Again, we've seen improvement. Uh, we can certainly sympathize with illness, if it will, injury, um, things like that. Um, life, things that we can't, um, foresee. So I, I sympathize with that part of it, again, w- we're at the point where we need to see progress, whether it be minimal or substantial, and to be honest, I think we've seen substantial.
On all five of these, there has been improvement, even one guy's on a crutch, and he's, man, he's made a lot of progress. And, you know, it's like, hey, I'm, I'm on a crutch, and I can only do this halfway, but man, he made a lot more progress than a lot of people have. And it seems like so many of them are, let's find ways to get out of this. Instead of finding ways to fix it, not any of, not any of these.
All five properties, this is the first. Ask for an extension, and they're all making progress.
Yes, sir.
So move for, to the end of the year.
Is that, is that your suggestion till end of December, or what was it?
Um, I think they were all asking for thirty-day extensions.
Okay.
I'll second that, yeah.
I've got a motion and a second to approve thirty-day extensions.
So thirty days mean December thirty-first, or this thirty days mean.
When was, when was their original time?
December first. So thirty-first would be the. Are you doing all five together?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, extensions till December thirty-first, end of the year. As presented, and, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
And just, just, Lori, just for your, I talked to Luanne because she gets requests, she sends them, you did tell her about, I asked. For her not to send them to us, to fill her wall to you, so we don't get confused, is this new, is this old, is this duplicate, is this whatever?
Okay. So basically, we want you to send these to us, not, not you sending some, not Ruth sending some, not Luanne sending some, we'd like them to come from your office.
Okay.
Just so it's, there's continuity, so it isn't, you know.
So we know that somebody isn't maybe submitting them here, and you guys don't, you know.
Yeah, and Luanne's been real good about making sure, right?
I get, but just, and then we're getting doubled.
Bring money for our, for.
No problem, can I share some good news real quick? There was a hundred and seven. Properties in Leisure Lake that have been served, well, head abatement nuisance violations. All but six were able to be served. Forty-nine of them. Are completely in compliance, or, or worrying compliance at one time, so, and mind you. The last bad, I think we had right at thirty served, so. This is pretty, this is pretty good to have forty-nine, so basically, half of what we've served has been abater.
I would say, great job, Leisure, we keep it up, and.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
We don't like to do this anymore than they like it to be done, so.
Absolutely.
Going forward, just keep it going.
Absolutely, that's what I'm hoping they do, and now it's time for Leisure Lake Property Owners Association to kick in.
Yep.
So.
I would say so, yes, I mean, kudos to Leisure Lake and their establishment and their committee, uh, to move forward with this, and they, uh, have a, a community, if you will. It's a community, so, um, they do have a new eating establishment open, open over there, I was, had the opportunity to go over and have a pizza, so, uh. Very nice and clean, and a nice crowd, and hope that works out for them.
Good deal.
I think Al and Al for, Al for ends, I think Al and Fred were both there, so. Yeah, good for them.
That works. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to my agenda. And. We're pretty close to tidying up, actually, because we didn't have, uh, appointments. Uh, is there any other? Boards or recommissions that we'd like to report on?
Uh, the only other one, Thursday on our, uh. Budget session, uh, the limestone bluff is gonna be presenting, they did. Um, hire a new executive director, uh, she will be making the presentation on Thursday, he's kind of getting up to speed on everything, but, um. She got vast knowledge of a lot of the grant processes and all that stuff, so that should really be a nice, nice fit, so.
Um. I'd have to look in my calendar, see what my committees were last week. Uh, nothing, no real important, I did have a chance, after a meeting last week, to stop down at the, uh. Uh, a new jail facility. And over to the extension building. And they're gonna have to work right along with extension billing to get her ready, hopefully by the end of the month, but, uh, they're making great progress, they're painting when I was in there, uh, just a lot of cleanup, so, looked real good. Um, I would say as far as the lawn center goes. They got a little work to do too yet, so they were, they had the, uh, mortar people in there, and the bricklayers and the blocklayers, and. Uh, working away at it, so, yeah, I guess. The thing is, what that facility is, and I mean, Jeremy talked about the heat. Uh, in the facility, so they got portable heat in there now, because they won't fire them units up, like he said, till it's. Dust-free, so. Uh, come along, so hopefully things progress there and work out, I see all the solar panels are up.
Yep, looks good.
Looks good, I like the looks on them. Um, did tear up the seating a little bit, but that's gonna be repaired, we'll have to decide what we want to do underneath them panels, so. Otherwise, I don't have anything else, um, I see Becky's back.
I am, yeah. We just want to pop in real quick. Um, I know you all are familiar with Jeff Kilburg, he's our new Facility Maintenance Manager. Um, he will be replacing Marty, when he retires here, he's gonna kind of cross-train for the next couple of months with Marty, just wanted to give official introduction to the public, so they can kind of. Be aware of the face when they see him around, so Jeff Kilburg.
Welcome aboard. Thank you, we don't who to kick around now, then, huh?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to, uh, getting to know everybody, get my wheels down and. See what all needs to be done and take care of it.
Yeah, we appreciate you looking things over and seeing what you come up with, yeah.
He's already got kudos for the day because he picked the women's restroom. If you have a good streak today.
Yeah, well, there's treats over here on the counter, by the way.
Oh, that's, yeah, before, yeah.
That's all you.
It's not today, no more.
What happened?
The women's restroom.
That screech.
Yep.
They don't hear it.
You never.
You never.
I know about that. When you flush the whole, the dinosaur.
Oh, wow, yeah, that's kind of. Did you fix it?
Fixed it.
Fix it.
What?
Just put a new flush on.
We'll see.
We'll see how long it's.
Yeah.
There is another one that's still making noise yet, but I don't have parts for that, so I'll get that to make it parts.
Oh, you mean the teddy bear already?
So, yeah, just international.
I think you make all the.
Reach out if you need.
Female's happy, you're doing good, so I'm just. Work on that bathroom. Thank you. All right, anything else before the board this morning?
Motion adjourned.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. I oppose. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.